All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to York City Council meeting. The first one in a year and a half in person. It's July the 20th, and we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Here.
Ritter Dixon?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Nixon?
Here. And if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of June the 1st or June the 15th?
None.
None.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes of June the 1st and June the 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very well, thank you. The next legislative meeting will be Tuesday, August the 17th, at 6 o'clock here in Council chambers. The item, the agenda items are due by noon on August 11th. We will move to a special agenda for resolution authorizing a budget transfer.
So introduced. And that is... Give me just one second here. Resolution, I'm trying to get the number on that. I'll get that in a second. Resolution introduced by Sandy Walker, authorizing a transfer of $4,000 for the Public Works Department. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or thoughts from the public? Anything from council on this item?
Director Green is here. Did you want to say anything in regards to this?
No.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ri... Rivera?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next item is resolution authorizing another budget transfer.
So introduced. And this is resolution number 69. And that is a resolution authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $27,000 to cover repair expenses for the King Street Garage. And that is under the Parking Bureau. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from council? Anything from the public on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next is resolution number 70.
So introduced. And I made a mistake. So the first one for Public Works was resolution 69. The second one for King Street Garage was resolution number 70. And so this one would be resolution number 71. Resolution number 71, introduced by Sandy Walker, a resolution authorizing a budget transfer in an amount of $17,859.12 to recover, to cover the change from the current part-time investigator to a full-time investigative position for the Human Relations Commission. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public on this matter? Ms. Seaton?
Good evening, council members. I just want to first say it's good to see all of you well and safe, as well as Councilman Rivera. I'm Stephanie Seaton, Commissioner for the York City Human Relations Commission. Just want to thank the administration and council. Hopefully, y'all approve this budget transfer for the hiring of a full-time investigator position. It's been quite a while, and it's been hard to fill that position as a part-time. So we're excited about having a full-time investigator onboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Mr. Rivera, I believe your time is up. We appreciate your tuning in from abroad. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great rest abroad.
Next, we have resolution number 72.
So introduced. Resolution number 72, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a resolution approving the preliminary final land development submitted by New Tech Group on behalf of Enviright of PA for the Drum Building for an expansion at 730 Volgasong Road. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Now, we will enter into final passages of bills. And this is bill number 17.
Bill number 17, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 1st meeting and ordinance amending the budget for 2021 by appropriating additional revenue and expenditures in the amount of $202,905 for the Bureau of Health Substance Abuse Prevention Program, Prescription Drug Monitoring Program. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
Anything from the...
I don't see anybody from...
Anything from the public on this item? Very well, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have final passage of bill number 18.
And that's bill number 18, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 1st meeting of council and ordinance vacating as a public street right-of-way portions of Stone Street and portions of South Newbury Street and the 9th Ward of the City of York. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, discussion?
None.
Anything from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have final passage of bill number 19.
Bill number 19, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 1st meeting of council. And that is a bill amending the York City budget reflecting changes to amounts for the 2020 budget. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next is final passage of bill number 20.
Bill number 20, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 1st meeting of council and ordinance amending the 2021 budget and home program budgets to reflect changes resulting from actual funding levels rolled over from 2020 and actual funding amounts for 2020 allocations. Moved to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Anything from the public? Madam Clerk, would you change that first word to amending?
Oh, just on the...
Right.
Okay, on the agenda.
You're right.
Okay, yes, sir.
Very well, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have bill number 21.
Bill number 21, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 1st meeting of council and ordinance amending the 2021 budget and home program budgets to reflect changes resulting from actual funding levels for the 2021 program year. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have bill number 22. Final passage of bill number 22.
Bill number 22, introduced by Lou Rivera at the June 1st meeting of council and ordinance amending the Article 509 parking meters of the Codified Ordinances, subsection 509.03, to remove the authority granted to the general authority to make recommendations to change the parking meter holiday schedule hours of operation or the addition of zones and subsection 509.04, Sundays and holidays excluded, to grant designation of set exclusions to be made solely by the mayor. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Anything from the public on this? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And finally, final passage of bill number 23.
Bill number 23, which was introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon at the June 15th meeting of council and ordinance amending the 2021 budget to reflect amounts for the 2021 budget for the Habitat Chestnut Street project in the amount of $500,000. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public on this matter? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Under new business, we have introduction of bill number 24.
So introduced. And that's bill number 24, introduced by Sandy Walker, and ordinance making an appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $386,000 to fund the projects... Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm going back.
No, $13,000.
Okay, yeah. An ordinance amending, making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $13,833 to fund increased costs for utilities and water.
Very well, that will sit until our next meeting in August. Next is bill number 25.
So introduced. Let's see here, that's actually bill number... Yes, 25, okay, I'm getting lost here. Bill number 25, a bill introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $386,000 to fund the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge replacement State Street project. Is that right, Chad?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. This one should just be for the State Street project?
No, Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge.
Okay.
The bridge, yeah.
But we're on the 386 right now, right?
386, yeah, it looks like the language is incorrect in that bill. So is there a motion to strike State Street project? So moved?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no? Okay, so that is a bill amending, making an appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $386,000 to fund the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge project.
And that will sit until our August meeting. Next, we have bill number 26.
So introduced. Bill number 26, introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $754,000 to... For replacement of the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge. Were there two grants? Were there two?
No, these are actually liquid fuels grants.
Okay. The same project, different funding, okay.
All right, and that one will sit also until August. Next, we have bill number 27.
So introduced. Bill number 27, introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill making an appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $200,167 to fund emergency repairs needed at the Police Department and other unexpected increased costs.
And once again, this will sit until our next meeting. Introduction of bill number 28.
So introduced. Bill number 28, introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $50,000 to fund the establishment of a housing and eviction counseling program.
And that will sit again till August meeting. We have introduction of bill number 29.
So introduced. Bill number 29, introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill amending the budget for the year 2021 by appropriating revenue and expenditures for the Parking Bureau to pay the General Authority's outstanding loan to complete the conveyance of the parking system.
And that will be considered at our August meeting. Next, we have bill number 30.
So introduced. Bill number 30, introduced by Sandy Walker, a bill amending the budget for 2021 by appropriating revenue expenditures for Public Works, York County Stormwater Consortium, Poorhouse Run String Restoration Project in the amount of $700,000.
And we will consider that in our August meeting. Now, we have a resolution for transferring 30 to 36 South George Street Rear.
So introduced. Resolution number 73, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a resolution transferring 30 to 36 South George Street Rear from the City of York to 700 Manor Drive, the Fulton Bank property. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Anything from the public on this matter?
Yes, President Nixon, I have a point of order. This is a transfer of land, Mr. Solicitor. It's listed here as an introduction of bill, but it was read as a resolution. Or am I on the wrong item?
You are on the right item. It is a resolution. We were corrected on that this earlier.
Yeah, it's cleaning up a deed, Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's not the sale of land.
All right, no discussion? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next, we have introduction of bill number 31.
So introduced. Bill number 31, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, an ordinance or a bill vacating a public street right-of-way a portion of Lake Avenue and the 8th Ward of the City of York.
And that will be considered in August when we meet. Next, we have introduction of bill number 32.
So introduced. Bill number 32, introduced by... I'm gonna... Which one was that? Is that the booting one?
Yes.
Okay, I had that one. It's supposed to be introduced by you, Henry, but I had the wrong one on the... Since Sandy did that, I'll correct that. All right, that's bill amending Article 507 Booting of the Codified Ordinances to establish booting on public and private property, amend notice of booting, booting fees, enforcement, establishing license requirements, qualifications, and prohibited acts, booting authorization, time limitations, complaint process, and amend financial interests and penalties.
And that will be considered in August. Next, we have resolution appointing and reappointing members to various boards and authorities.
So introduced. And that is resolution number 74, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. Council hereby consents to the following as recommended by the mayor: reappointment of Deborah Martinez to the York City Human Relations Commission to serve until July 16, 2024; reappointment of Cheryl Cronister as a member of the Human Relations Commission to serve until July 16, 2024; appointment of Jada Richardson as a member of the Human Relations Commission to serve until July 16, 2024; appointment of Rabia Khan as a member of the York City Human Relations Commission to serve until July 16, 2024; appointment of Philip Given as a member of the General Authority to serve into the first Monday of January 2026; appointment of Patricia Marr as a member of the Consolidated Board of Appeals to serve into the first Monday of October 2022; and the appointment of Jeffrey Kirkland as a member of the Consolidated Board of Appeals to serve into the first Monday of October 2023.
Any... Who's introducing that?
I am.
And we have a second?
Moved to approve?
Moved to approve, yes, thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this thing by council? Anything from the public on this item before we vote?
We have some voters here.
Yes, ma'am?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaton?
Go ahead. Do you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to thank both of these appointees, and I didn't know if they wanted to say anything, but I did want to let council know that this, with the reappointment by the mayor and the appointment of these two individuals, that will bring the York City Human Relations Commission to a full complement of commissioners. So that is good news. And so that's what I wanted to say, that we certainly welcome them. This young lady, I mean, her resume speaks for herself, but she's been so active in the community on social justice issues, advocating for underserved and disenfranchised, as well as Rabia Khan. So she's a former investigator, as you're aware. So we certainly welcome them as members of the York City Human Relations Commission. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will give each of you an opportunity to introduce yourselves once we've taken the vote. Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and welcome aboard. Who wants to go first?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jada Richardson. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Ms. Seaton, for thinking of me. I just want to say that I'm excited to be able to make a difference in our community and be able to be a voice for people who may not be confident and feel as though they have a voice. So, thank you and good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rabia Khan. Thank you so much for pronouncing my name correctly. Appreciate that. I'd like to thank the mayor and Commissioner Seaton and all of you. This is a great honor. As you know, I was the investigator for about a year. Now, I'm at the York County Community Foundation, but I'm really happy and honored to be back as a commissioner, and I look forward to serving the city in this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't sit down yet, Rabia. And Jada, if you want to stand up, if you take your oath of office right now?
Well, we have others here.
Oh, there's other ones?
For the others, yes. Yes, Ms. Marr?
Oh, I didn't even see you there. Hi.
It's the gray hair.
Jeff is coming in the door.
No. I want to thank Mayor Helfrich for thinking of me and suggesting this appointment to the Consolidated Board of Appeals. As you probably are aware, I have considerable background in serving on such bodies. And I just want to thank you for your confidence and giving me the opportunity to give back to our community. Thank you.
Very, thank you. I see that Mr. Kirkland came in. I don't think you need any introductions, but please come forward and introduce yourself nonetheless. You've been voted in.
Well, thank you. I really came down to support my granddaughter here and all like that, but it's good to see you all. Have a good evening. Thank you for your vote of confidence. Hope to do what I can, you know, to help support our city.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Very good. Well, we applaud your service and thank you. We need volunteers, and you have stepped forward to fill that role. And you are much needed, and again, we welcome you. You can swear. We swear you all in.
You can just stand up around the microphone there.
Yeah, just come forward.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Tricia Marr.
Jim Kirkland.
Do you solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of this commonwealth
and the Constitution of this commonwealth.
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity.
of my office with fidelity.
You sounded great. You should become a group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to come up, sir, and get a picture? I see you going from the back there.
All right, next, we have resolution number 75.
So introduced. Resolution number 75, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a resolution authorizing the submission of a proposal for funds in the amount of $50,000, for funding an amount of $50,000, $50,532 with the Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the, for equipment for a community-based program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments?
No.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, that is so ordered. Resolution Number 76.
So introduced.
Resolution 76, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution authorizing submission of a proposal for funding an amount of $500,000 with the Smart Policing Initiative Grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
No.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. That is so ordered. Next, we have Resolution Number 77.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 77, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution appointing Todd Tyler as a probationary police officer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Anything from the public? Well, please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next is a resolution approving the 2021 Annual Action Plan.
So introduced.
Resolution Number, whatever it was he said.
Seventy-nine.
A resolution approving the 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, Resolution Number 80.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 80, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution approving the 2021 Annual Action Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. That is so ordered. Next is Resolution Number 80.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 80, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a pumping sludge out... I'm sorry. Oh, bless you. Whereas the city desires to contract for services for pumping sludge out of digester two to evaluate and correct damages, and whereas quotes were received from Kleins, Inc., now therefore be it resolved, council hereby approves an agreement for services for same.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public on this item?
I was just going to ask Director Green to just talk about this a bit for the public.
This was... This is actually what I spoke to you guys about a couple of weeks ago when I called about the emergency we had out the wastewater treatment plant. When the digesters, the wall collapsed, so we are now trying to get it all pumped out, the sludge removed, so that we can get the digester evaluated to see what we... Hopefully, there's nothing wrong with it, but there may be some damage.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And I have to comment that, I know it's the proper term, but a digester for a sewer system is just an awful word. Next is Resolution Number 81.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 81, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution awarding a contract in amount of $336,787 to Shiloh Paving and Escavating for the State Street Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments?
No comment. I'll just ask Director Green to talk about this resolution as well.
This is a paving project that we're going to do State Street, and it's going to go from Market, and it's going to head north to the street end. Yes, so a couple, probably in 2019, we worked to pave this street. And utility companies, York Water, still had to get in there, so we kind of requested York Water to get in there so that we could pave it. And then we got to last year, 2020, ran into COVID issues, obviously, and now it's back on the agenda to get paved this year.
Thank you.
But I think with the new development and some of the other work that we did in that area, it's going to be a great area once this project is complete.
Agreed.
Yes, it'll be lovely to have State Street paved. Thank you.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next is Resolution Number 82.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 82, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution awarding a contract to Kinsley Construction in the amount of $754,029 for replacement of the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next is Resolution Number 31. No, 83. Item 31.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 31, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution authorizing the sale of eight surplus vehicles, which are no longer in service, all of which have been replaced with newer vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have Resolution Number 84.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 84, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution authorizing an agreement with Buchard Horn for planning for professional services related to renovation of the historic Rex Laurel Five Station.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And finally, we have Resolution Number 85.
So introduced.
Resolution 85, introduced by Judy A. Ritter Dixon. A resolution extending the declaration of disaster emergency for the City of York through August 31, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that's the end of our legislative session. Are there any comments by counsel before we adjourn? Mr. Mayor, anything?
Yes, thank you, President Nixon. I have quite a few. I hope you don't mind. First of all...
What if I did?
Well, hey, it's your meeting. But I think this is all for the benefit of the public. First, I'd just like to thank Tom Ray. Tom Ray, our business administrator, is retiring at the end of the week, and I want to thank you for all your service to our community. It's been really great, and most recently, for the past... What has it been, two years as our business administrator? Thank you so much, Tom. And Tom will... I can't say he'll be replaced. Kim Robertson will be the interim business administrator as we do a search, a nationwide search.
I want to echo that. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Wanted to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan funds and other funds that we've been blessed to receive over this time. While we have been going through a crisis, we've also been blessed to receive many funds. And I want to make sure that the public understands that any funds received by the administration must go through City Council to be appropriated. So if there are any questions of how these funds have been spent over the last 14 months or so, all you have to do is read the minutes from the meetings from City Council. However, we will be compiling a more comprehensive list and spreadsheet of how these funds have been spent, and we will provide that on the York City website soon. So there have been some questions recently and some very uninformed statements, such as, we have already spent $20 million of the ARPA funds. Well, for the public's information, the $50,000 that City Council appropriated this evening for emergency housing and eviction counselors, that is the first time we are touching the money that is in the bank, which is approximately, oh, $17.5, $17.6 million in the bank right now. So we just touched $50,000 of it. It's the first one. But there will be many, many, many amendments to the budget that council will be bringing forward. Well, I guess council will probably put them all in, hopefully squish them into a few amendments, but there will be a lot of line items being changed because we have to count for every new dollar that comes into the city. And Mr. Rivera was here today because we need four votes of council to appropriate that money. So there are checks and balances here at the city, and I just want to assure everyone that every dollar goes through those checks and balances. We're also, at this time, requesting your input on how we spend the money in our community. This is a once-in-a-lifetime chance for us to invest in our community. Nothing like this, I don't think, has ever happened, where just such a large sum of money has been given to us. And basically, we're directed to spend this on the health, the economic improvements of the community, on reducing violence, on potentially investing in broadband or stormwater issues. There's really quite a variety of things that you can invest in. And at this time, you can go right to the main yorkcity.org webpage and take a survey and have your voice heard. We put this online yesterday at like four or five, maybe, and we've already gotten 140 responses. So this is quite an amazing way for folks to have their voices heard, and I'm really, really excited about that. And I want to thank Colin and Mike Pritchard and Blanda and Melanie Baldwin, who have really made a great effort putting a survey together and making sure that our community, that our voices can be heard. So please, I encourage everyone to go to yorkcity.org and take the survey, and let us know what you're thinking about how we should invest in our future. There is another way you can help us learn how we should invest in our future, and that is that we have comprehensive planning meetings back up and running. So COVID knocked us down for a while. We had a great session in the end of 2019, where we had sessions all over the city and requested that people bring us your problems. Essentially, what are the problems in the city? But this round, we're looking at solutions. So there are meetings. There are 12 meetings coming up, 10 of which are in parks all around the city, and two of which are online. And you can go to yorkcity.org/events and see the events calendar and check out where there's going to be a meeting near you. Mike Pritchard, our planner, is running those meetings. We also have at least 10 volunteers from the community. And this is how we really decide. So between the ARPA surveys and you voicing your opinions during our comprehensive planning process, this is what you, how you decide what your city is going to look like. So I really encourage folks to come out to those meetings or participate online if you are not able to come out and join us in person. I wanted to make sure, I wanted to inform both council and the public that the city, over the weekend, did receive a ruling from an arbitrator that was looking at the case of Officer Schwartz and his employment with the city. The arbitrator ruled that it was his determination that by the contract, Clayton Schwartz, Officer Schwartz, should be reinstated. However, that is not the final say in this entire legal situation. We also have things before the Court of County pleas, or the Court of, the County Court of Common pleas. So it is the administration's position that we are going to continue to watch what is happening in the Court of Common pleas, and, you know, we'll come back to review. So at this time, we are choosing not to directly follow the order of the arbitrator because it was clearly already determined that we are eligible to hear parts of our case heard at the Court of Common pleas. So basically, we have two legal bodies that need to fight it out, and we're going to wait to see what comes out of that. Are there any questions from council on that? I think everything else is fun and good stuff. Well, not too fun. Please, the COVID numbers are down. They're down pretty heavily, but that, down to almost one case a day, which is great, but that doesn't mean it's gone. And if you've been paying attention, we know that there is a very dangerous strain out there, and in many other communities, it is rising rapidly. So COVID vaccines are still available at the Family First Health Clinic right across the street here at 116 South George, and you can get on mywellspan.org to set up an appointment for Tuesdays and/or Thursdays. So please, we are not out of the woods yet. And I think some of us, including myself, have gotten a little bit comfortable, and it is not yet time to get comfortable. So we have to keep working on this thing. Our enemy has not yet been defeated. So I hope that folks will continue to seek the vaccinations and, you know... I actually was against it, myself, just for myself, because I had bad reactions to the flu vaccines. And, but then I thought about, what if this thing mutated in me, and then it killed my daughter? How would I feel then? And that's what got me to change my mind. So even though I don't like this thing, I'm going to do it. So just because you don't like it, I don't like it either. But if you would fight for your children, then at this point, you should get this thing. Because if we don't, if we don't fight, it could mutate and kill one of our loved ones. The York Health Bureau is providing Narcan on the fourth Tuesdays of each month at our York City Health Center, at the Albert Wire Health Center at 435 West Philadelphia Street, on, from 10 to 2:00 p.m. So the next time is next Tuesday, 10 to 2:00 p.m. You can come there, get a real short training, and possibly save somebody's life. You get a little box with the Narcan in it, and you just never know. So I keep one in my car because you just never know. So it's a handy thing to have, and it's one of the easiest ways. You know, you think of CPR and things that are pretty complicated. You got to get real close to somebody to try and save a life that way. Narcan, all you got to do is hit them with that thing, and you might save a life. The Art in the Park is back, and this week, it's at Penn Park on Thursday. You can get free art kits for your kids. 6:30 Thursday at Penn Park. Make sure I'm not missing anything. Oh, York City jobs. We have 16 jobs available right now at the City of York. We need, most of those require a city residency. If you are a resident of the City of York and you need a job, please at least check out yorkcity.org/employment. Get on the yorkcity.org page, and it'll say, what do you want to do? And it says, apply, and you scroll down, apply for employment. It's that easy. You can find out. And we have jobs, everything from seasonal labor jobs that require almost no experience, the whole way up to business administrator, if you have that experience. So we are taking applications for that. If you need stuff for your kids to do, there's great programs at the Vani Grimes Gym right now. Build them up with basketball. The Boys Club of York, been around 75 years. They're here to help our youth. And on Mondays and Wednesdays, they'll be at the Vani Grimes Gym. And that, I don't have the number or the time on, but it's around 4:00 o'clock to 6:30, I believe. But you can contact BYC Basketball 717@gmail, and this is free for all York City school students. And finally, or not finally, next to finally,